Good afternoon. I am Kim Melnick, School Board Chair and the Administrative Informal and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at four o'clock on this twenty-sixth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four. I welcome everyone who is joining us in person and online. Um, Madam Clerk, will you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Dr. Green, and Ms. Riggs, and currently online is Ms. Manning. And Ms. Manning, can you verify the reason why you are zooming in your location?
For personal reasons, and I'm in Virginia Beach.
Thank you very much. And for the record, Ms. Owens is also present in the School Board Chamber.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll begin this evening with administrative matters. Does anybody have anything? Okay, I have two. So the first one is, um, we received a date from staff about the summer retreat, and those dates are July, Tuesday, July eighth, and Wednesday, July ninth. And staff needs a day for July seventh to, um, complete final preparations. And we, we typically never have a retreat on a Monday, so that's a Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, but we as a board need to select this date as soon as possible so, um, staff can plan the summer leadership conference. And that conference is typically planned around our retreat time. And so, um, that's for your information right now, but we're gonna have to vote on that at the next School Board meeting so that we can, um, direct staff and get them going with their planning, because six months happen, seven months happens quickly. So, all right, that's the first thing. Second thing is, over the past five years, the School Board has approved the superintendent's recommendation to grant approved leave over the holiday break. Um, and because of the dates and where we fall this year, um, the superintendent has proposed four dates. And so I'm going to share this with you now, um, to kind of mull it over until, um, agenda planning where we can add this for, for action, so we can talk about this, so that that, that plan can also be made. Um, it's Thursday, December twenty-sixth, and Friday, December twenty-seventh, and Thursday, January second, and Friday, January third. And I'm gonna allow Dr. Robertson to expand on that a little bit.
Yes, um, just the way the calendar has, has fallen out, um, right now, our twelve-month employees are scheduled to work December twenty-sixth, December twenty-seventh, that's a Thursday and Friday. They come back the next Monday and work December, uh, tw- thirtieth, and Tuesday, December thirty-first. They're off Wednesday, January first, and then they would come back to work Thursday, uh, January second, and Friday, January third, and we were hopeful that the board would consider, uh, waiving the Thursday and Friday of each week, or at minimum, th- the Thursday and Friday, December twenty-sixth, twenty-seven, so that at least they have a week off, um, for, uh, holidays. And this has been something that's been proposed and, and approved in some form over the last five years. So, uh, if this makes it to the agenda, we'll be prepared to give you a couple of options, either four days or two days, uh, so that, again, they can either have one full week off, or they possibly could have two weeks. Well, they wouldn't have a second week off, because they would work that Monday and Tuesday, the thirtieth and thirty-first. But they, they wouldn't come back after January first until that Monday, January sixth.
And in addition, twelve-month employees also build up flex time too, correct? They have opportunities. I mean, when I say flex time, well, we can talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, they don't, they don't get that opportunity.
But they do work beyond contract hours though, correct?
Yes, they get, the overtime rules changed, and so they get paid for that. They have to do that now.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Callen? Um, think about that, right? We don't have to have it, we're, we'd like to add this to the agenda for action, and we can talk about it then for tonight. It is, because he has to be able, he has to be able to, um, let staff know so that they can plan, um, accordingly, correct? Okay. The other thing is, um, I have two sign-ups. The first is for meetings with the superintendent, and the second is school visits with the superintendent. And so I'm gonna start that with Dr. Green, because she's brand-new and has not had the opportunity to visit a school with, um, Dr. Robertson, and I would just ask if you have done it recently, that perhaps you passed, because I too have not had a chance. I've, uh, the one day I was signed up was a day we did not have school. So, um, if you have, I would love the opportunity as well. But I'm gonna pass these down to Dr. Green to start, and we'll go from there. Anybody else? Okay, then we are ready to begin. And tonight, we start with the facilities update. Um, and we welcome Jack Freeman, Chief Operations Officer, and Melissa Ingram, Executive Director of Facility Services. Welcome.
Afternoon, Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. This is a facilities brief. The primary goal is to share information related to facilities work. That facility's work, however, is dependent on funding. So we need to share a fair bit of information about funding. We're settling, we're setting the stage today for adjustments we're working on for next year's proposed CIP that you will see in February. As we go through this brief, we encourage you to focus on the projects we are trying to accomplish. We've talked a lot about roofs, HVAC, foundations, and fire alarm replacements. Today, we will update you on progress with those projects, and we'll go a layer deeper. So although we want to talk, uh, we want you to focus on the projects, we need to set the stage with funding information. And as we have been sharing with you over the past two years, the CIP ship is sinking. It is sinking because CIP funding has not kept up with inflation. We are on track to lose approximately nine hundred and fifty million dollars in buying power since two thousand and nine. You've seen this slide before. We've updated it by adding what it would look like if we added another year of level funding. The dark blue bars represent the annual allocations. So you can see in, uh, two thousand and nine, annual allocations were sixty-two point seven million. You follow those all the way over to the current year, which is currently obscured by one of them, but we're talking about sixty-two point, uh, sixty-three point eight million dollars in the current year, level funding. And then you project out, uh, sixty-one point eight million dollars moving forward. Those are the dark blue bars. The light blue bars are what we would have needed to keep pace with inflation. So you can see in two thousand and ten and eleven, it was thirty-five million dollars that we got in the blue bar. So that was a difference of twenty-nine point four million dollars lost in buying power in that one year alone. And you see all those numbers, how they add up over time. So moving forward, the yellow bars are based on projected inflation, and we'll show you how we got the projected inflation numbers. You can see the values there. And then the orange dropdown bars, those are the projected gap moving forward. So in twenty-four, twenty-five, the gap is projected to be fifty-four point six million dollars in this one year alone. You've seen this slide before. The Producers Price Index is specific to new school construction. It's national-level data. Doesn't include things that you buy in the grocery store. It's specific for new school construction. So you can see what that, uh, projected inflation numbers were over time. And, uh, then you look, get to the yellow bars, and the yellow bars are projected moving forward. So we, uh, have a consultant that does those estimates for us. Uh, the good news is, is it used to settle out at six point two percent in the out-years. It's at five point two percent. Uh, I'm sorry, five point six percent in the out-years that we're projecting the inflation rate, and we will use our calculations to adjust for those. If you look at, uh, we now have a full-year data for two thousand and twenty-three, so that's now at seven point four percent. That was significantly higher last year with only partial data. Uh, if you look at, uh, twenty-four, obviously we only have partial year data for that. The current number is two point eight. We'll update that next year when we have full numbers associated with that. This is straight from our adopted capital program. You can see the total annual appropriations in the red box, level funding over the next six years. We will continue to lose buying power over the next six years if we don't take action. We shared this slide with you last year during the budget season, so the bottom-right chart. The dark blue bars are annual appropriations, and you can see that those match up with what we saw on the previous slide, so six point, uh, sixty-three point eight this year, and then overtime, sixty-one point eight in the out-years. The green bars are maintenance projects. So for, uh, this year, forty-four million dollars is what's allocated there. And we've now indexed that to inflation, to lose buying, to prevent further loss in buying power for maintenance projects. And so that's where you see that increase over time. The light blue bars are annual allocations for new construction. So you can see that decreases over time. Goes from approximately nineteen million dollars in year one to one point four million dollars in year six. In a level funding environment, when we're prioritizing our maintenance projects and trying to prevent loss in buying power, we will lose our ability to fund new construction. You've seen subversion of this slide many times now. Debt service is the most important factor that currently affects our ability to increase funding in the capital program. We have been, and will continue to work with Davenport, to propose a plan to improve current conditions. That being said, we're currently not using about five million dollars in debt service. So we have the ability to add some maintenance projects while remaining within the current debt service limit. For the last two years, we've emphasized the need to address roofs, HVAC, foundations, and fire alarm replacement. In this brief, we will review our progress on those projects, and we will go a layer deeper. Our goal is to present a proposed capital program to you in February that increases allocations to support this additional layer of projects while remaining below the current debt service limit. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Ingram, who will walk you through the projects.
Thanks, Jack, and good afternoon, everyone. Um, so while there are many projects in the CIP, we will be focusing, uh, this update on maintenance-related renovation and replacement needs um, of our aging buildings, of which we have been updating you on those, um, that have been in a deferred state, those being roofing, HVAC, foundations, and fire alarm replacements. As an update to roofing, the list in front of you includes those roofs that have been identified with the greatest need of replacement, of which most on this list are in an unsatisfactory condition, meaning they have aged to the point where repairs become complicated, and threats of failures or leaks reoccurring are great, impacting the learning environment. We've worked on several school roof replacement projects this summer, such as Newcastle Elementary School, of which we've shared, uh, failure conditions at our last facilities update with you. With funding provided, we are working to catch up to our deferred replacement unsatisfactory needs, with almost a third of roofs on this list showing as fair. As our buildings continue to age, condition assessments, of course, can change, the most recent being Woodstock Elementary School, changing from fair to unsatisfactory since our last update to you. So above the red line on this list, over the next two years, summers twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, we'll be working on replacing roof systems on three elementary schools, one middle school, and one high school, with these replacement projects being two-phase projects, and some continuing to be completed into year three or summer twenty twenty-seven. Also above the red line, we are cost participating in the roof replacement at, um, the Advanced Technology Center with the city and TCC. Below the red line, we are evaluating schools for the following two fiscal years, years three and four of the CIP, being allocated roughly ten million dollars a year in funding. We are currently studying these projects, and depending on the size of the schools and cost, how many we will be able to execute over those following two years. So looking at our next building system, HVAC, this is a more complex building system with many different components, ranging from central systems such as chillers and boilers to rooftop units, classroom units, and kitchen installations where no HVAC currently exists in some cases. You can see the first page of the HVAC list of projects show all identified being in unsatisfactory condition, again, with difficulty in maintaining units and a high probability of failure. Continuing to page two of the HVAC list, where we estimate, again, above the red line, working to execute over the next two years in summers twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. As with roofing, many of the more complex replacements, such as at Rosemont Forest Elementary School, go into two phases and sometimes three. This HVAC list is longer than in roofing due to the variation in project costs and the funding being about three times greater in HVAC than roofing due to needs. Below the red line, HVAC condition assessments continue as unsatisfactory, where we are evaluating the next set of larger projects for the following two years, years three and four of the CIP. As with roofing, priorities can change, and any other needs that arise and may not yet be listed will also be evaluated. We will continue to also evaluate kitchens without HVAC, with the goal of installing two to three per year until all kitchens have this need fulfilled, with our current evaluation plan that we project reducing twenty-three kitchens without HVAC to ten by summer twenty twenty-six. We have also been discussing foundations and fire alarm replacements with you. Here you see several projects under both categories. Where listed above the red line are those projects being accomplished within the next two years, and those under the red line, those that will continue to be evaluated for subsequent years. Foundation projects are important in ensuring the building envelope, structure, and drainage of our aging buildings are adequately addressed. Fire alarm system replacement projects are important in protecting the health and safety of our buildings and students, along with other fire suppression system projects, such as a ceiling replacement project that we just completed at Birdneck Elementary School, helping sprinkler systems to effectively function. So as an update to a priority that we have also discussed with you in our previous update, uh, the ADA access to athletic fields is what we'll discuss next. Working with school leadership, student, uh, student, school athletics, and our Parks and Recreation Landscape Management Team for planning and installation, all of our high school athletic sites have been improved to be ADA compliant. We are continuing this work at the middle school level and have completed improvements at Brandon Middle School, as well as phase-one improvements at Corporate Landing Middle School. We are evaluating the remaining schools and plan to complete the improvements over the next three years. So a new system we want to update you on today are our windows and exterior door systems. As our buildings continue to age, we work to ensure the indoor environment and building envelope are adequate for our learning environments. While, while we repair these systems as needed, we have unfortunately had to defer the replacement of these systems as a whole due to funding limitations. The last building that had this system replaced was at Providence Elementary School five years ago. Not only do the windows and doors need to be evaluated as we plan for future replacement projects, but due to the location and construction of these systems, considerations need to be made for environmental abatement needs when they are disturbed for replacements, such as asbestos and a substance sometimes found in caulking PCBs. So in front of you are a list of schools where windows and exterior doors have been identified to be addressed, with a range in projected costs being, um, unknown due to conditions of abatement needs we just discussed. As with all of our lists we've discussed with you today, as we study and scope these windows and door projects, prioritization can also change. As with other projects, some of those listed could also turn into two-phase projects. The first four schools above the red line are being scoped and tested to work towards design for replacement over the next two years, with one to be planned for replacement in summer twenty twenty-six, and three additional schools in twenty twenty-seven. We would need to fund these projects with allocations of roughly one and a half to two and a half million dollars annually over the next two years in order to execute construction.
All right, I'm gonna take this last one, because we had a bit of a conversation at the last meeting about turf fields. Uh, the current direction from the board is to install turf fields at all of our high schools. This slide is our proposed plan to accomplish that direction from the board. There are four schools that remain: Tallwood, Lansdowne, Cox, and Prince San. Our proposed plan is to accomplish one per summer over the next three summers. Prince San High School is intended to be accomplished as part of the new construction project. You can see the estimated cost of each project is approximately three million dollars. As we discussed at the last meeting, these fields require re-turfing at about the eight to eleven-year mark. With an end state of eleven fields, a rough planning tool is to plan for re-turfing one field per year. Returfing currently costs about nine hundred thousand dollars. So after we've completed funding new turf fields, and if there is no change in direction from the board, we intend to program one re-turfing field per year at an estimated cost of nine hundred thousand dollars, and that's current-year dollars. And that number would need to be inflated year over year. That's our proposed plan based on current direction from the board, which we understand is under discussion now. To wrap this up, we intend to develop a proposed capital program for FY twenty-five, twenty-six that increases allocations while remaining within the debt service limit. And we have about five million dollars of debt service over the next couple of years. And we will work with Davenport and the city to plan our public facility revenue bonds to enable these projects while remaining within the debt service limit. With that, we're available to answer your questions.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you. Appreciate this update. So on the heels of our joint session with City Council today, um, I think Councilwoman Henley had brought up a great question about, uh, the J-Larke study, as well as the fact that, I guess it was about two, two thousand and eight or two thousand and eighteen, I can't remember which one, right? Two thousand and eight, um, they started re- reusing or redistributing lottery funds a little differently. And so I want to figure out a method or, um, a way for us to start ensuring that those lottery funds go back to the original intent. Um, and I know that that works, is, happens through the legislative channel and that sort of thing, but, um, you know, I, I really feel like that is something that, I, the lottery was at the, uh, the Virginia Lottery was actually at the convention, the School Board Convention we attended. Um, again, I, I know that those involved with the lottery would like to see it go back to, or, uh, you know, to make sure the intended purpose, um, is, is actually happening, um, with those funds. So, so I really feel like we have to figure out a way, and I'm just making a statement there. My question, um, is about another City Council member's quest, a question about, about the HVAC. Um, one of the City Council members had asked, and I'm disappointed that we didn't say it on public, you know, in front of the public, um, about the fact that they have four hundred and eighty-five buildings in City Council. We have eighty-six or eighty-seven, that's what he said. Um, and why are our HVAC expenses? And I, I wish that we would have ensured or, or said in front of the public that our building sizes are so much larger. I mean, one of our school buildings probably encompasses twenty of theirs, maybe. Um, and of course, that is the larger, you know, it's a larger price tag for an HVAC that has got to, um, work for a much larger square-footage building. So, w- w- am I, am I correct in that assumption, um, Mr. Freeman, about the fact that the, the, the price tag seems a bit higher for our buildings just because of the sheer size compared to?
Ms. Tonya, can you bring up the HVAC slide, please? So, um, again, just for a point of reference for everybody, his, his observation, and this is not the first time he's made that observation, is that the city allocates in a line item approximately two point five million dollars for HVAC, and we allocate much more. Um, that's the general observation. We answered that question, uh, a little under a year ago. Once, we will respond to that question again. We'll work through all the right processes to have that covered, and we will respond. You can see on this slide, the number of, and this is one of two slides, so the number of unsatisfactory HVAC systems that we have, and the estimated dollar value of those HVAC systems. And then you go to the next slide, and that just gets this down to year two. What you notice, uh, by, what you probably noticed on the, the first slide and this one is, although they're big numbers, they're relatively smaller. Because when I go to the next slide, and you start looking at the bigger projects that we're doing outside of, uh, year two, uh, look at those first five to six that, schools that you go down, and the dollar value that's attached. There's a reason that we have been sharing with you, the concern related to HVAC amongst roofs, fire alarms, and foundations. So we will, uh, provide another response, uh, to City Council, um, that shares where we currently are. His, uh, is an observation which is a comparison. What we can't talk about is how the city does their business, uh, related to the line item that he described, but we'll be able to share where we are.
Well, a- and hopefully in a way that it, that simplifies to the layperson watching these meetings with a simple explanation, and that's, and that's why I was just trying to simplify it in the sense that the square footage per one of their buildings is nowhere in comparison to one of the school board, or the school buildings. Right? And so I, I, I wish that there would be a way, I mean, all of this is great. Very few constituents are gonna get into the weeds about the, the dollars and the numbers, but, but I just thought that the question brought up some, that question brought up other questions about the validity of his statement, and, um, and I, I just wish that we can get ahead of that to ensure that we're, you know, I don't want anyone to think that we are just, you know, not trying to find the best bid, or, you know, that sort of thing, so.
Yes, we'll do our best to simplify it, but quite honestly, it's, it's not simple. And what we want to avoid is when we share things, that it sets them up for a counter, that it mean, that it shares something like, well, you don't understand the comparison we're doing. So for example, they would likely point towards a rec center and say, well, this is approaching the size of some of the buildings that we're talking about. So again, understand your point of how do we simplify the message in a way that makes it understandable, but we, at the same time, we don't want them to receive a, well, you're not being genuine in the way you're But we, at the same time, we don't want them to receive a, well, you're not being genuine in the way you're simplifying it because. We have things that can compare in some way with your.
And I do agree that collaboration with City Council is vitally important. We, we don't want to have it, you know, be a combative situation, um, where we constantly go back and forth. I would love a collaborative statement, but I, I just wanted to ensure that, you know, um, that it's not just a statement. Or a response that goes back to that one city council person, because now that it's been put out there. Um, I want to make sure that it's a statement that is put out for our community.
We will follow the standard protocols for when we respond to City Council questions. Which will ensure that it gets to all of their counterparts, it will not go to one individual.
Okay, and then, um, in terms of the turfing, uh, you know, I'm, I'm really conflicted on that, to be quite honest with you. But. In your opinion and, and Ms. Ingram's opinion, um, I mean. There's no turning back necessarily, right? I mean, we've, we've done, what, all but, how many fields? Four fields. So, at this point, can we even turn back? Is that even realistic?
That's not what we do. We, we provide you the data and information to be able to make your decision.
Yeah, that's a, that's a board decision. I mean, it is, it's a board decision. We, we've got seven fields done, we have four more to go, and if, if this board decided those four were not going to be done, then. We, they play on grass.
Okay, alright, that's the end of my question.
Before I move on to, uh, Ms. Anderson. Can you just let the board know how many square feet we have total? Tony Arnold used to say, folks, we have. Eleven million square feet, so that's probably, uh, a number we should all be armed with all the time. Um, when speaking to friends on council or constituents. Eleven million, that's a lot, it's a lot of square footage, Ms. A. That's how many square feet we have, um, in all of our buildings combined, eleven million square feet. Alright, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, my, my question. First of all, before I get to my question, I, I also want to reiterate what Ms. Ms. Franklin was, was saying, is that, is that. Every single one of our schools is bigger even than City Hall. Square footage wise. So, tha- that needs to be said. I'm not, I'm not saying that, but, I just don't think it's fair to compare. The four hundred and some buildings that they have, because some of them are just a small little, little place, you know. All of our buildings are huge, even an elementary school. When you think about how it's laid out and how the square footage, how it goes about. So, so B, I just, I don't think it was a fair comparison at all when you compare money-wise, dollar-wise. To compare, um, HVAC systems for our schools, even the smallest one. To their buildings in general, so I just want to say that. I, I think the public needs to be made aware of that because it made it sound like today that, you know, that we, we're. Somehow spending more money per square foot than, than they are. I don't think that's, I don't think that's what we're really doing, I mean. But anyway, I just want to say that, because I just feel like we have to put it in simple terms. So that the general public understands, um, what we're doing, because it is their money. And I don't want it, I don't want it to be perceived that we're wasting it. The other thing is, um, could you tell me, is there anyone that can tell me? How the. The fields. Are, are better for their stu-, for our students. Why, I know, I know, I know why we went down this path to putting these turf fields on for some of our schools. Because we were having prob-, drainage problems. And I get that. But, a- and it also to me seems not equitable citywide for not all the high schools to have it. Ones got it, they all should have it. Um, but at the same time, it is a lot of money and we've been criticized in the past for spending money on turf fields. When we really could be spending it on building schools. So, I just, I'm not, I'm, I'm conflicted about the turf fields as well, but I need a reason. Why we need to be doing turf fields instead of grass, to begin with. I know that Ocean Lakes had a drainage problem, I realize that where, where Kellum is located. Probably had a drainage problem, I don't know for sure, but I think that was one of the reasons. So, maybe that was why, can anybody tell me, does it, does it prevent injuries? Is it less inj-, are students less injury prone on one of the, one of the, one of the kind of fields? Can, could we have an explanation?
Your question brings up a broad host of factors. About why should we continue with the board's direction to staff? To install turf fields. As we shared you at the board meeting last week, that's not something that gets turned around in two weeks. And the host of questions that, that gets asked. The bottom line is staff has been implementing the board's direction to implement turf fields. To the point where it's not even, wasn't even on action, it was on consent. That's the level of direction and of how we were moving. That's not to say that we can't move into a different direction, but to be able to, within two weeks period of time, come back to you. With all of the reasoning behind, not reasoning, with all of the information behind pros and cons of. Moving forward with turf fields where, uh, grass fields currently exist with reverting from turf fields back to grass fields. We need direction from the board, if the board wants to change course. Staff needs that direction and then we'll come back to you with all of the information to support a decision. In the meantime, we are, we are following the direction from the board.
I get it, that the board, that's, that was the direction that you've been told to, to follow from the board, but. To be able to explain to the public. Why we went this direction to begin with, I know, I know part of it had to do with. You know, flooding issues around the city and that type of thing, but. I mean, is, are there facts out there that can help us? In some way, I mean, are, are, are injuries less prone to happen on a turf field?
I'll take that.
Okay, thank you.
So, having played collegiately on a turf field and on grass. I cannot point to one over the other. That, what really, to me, cemented the push to get turf fields across. All of our high schools when we added lacrosse. Because of another, uh, sport. Needing a si-, a field the size of a, a football field or a soccer field. Clearly, for years, Virginia Beach City Public Schools maintained their grass fields. Having coached and played, by November, those fields are chewed up. They're still safe though. You try to get them to recover between the end of the football season and the beginning of soccer season. And we did, we did a good job with that, but by halfway through the soccer season, they're chewed up. And adding lacrosse, it adds more stress. With seven turf fields, we do have the ability, if we have inclement weather. That prevent us from using a field to move a game from a grass field to a turf field on a different night. We do have that ability. So, I think the board is struggling with the price tag. Which is legitimate, and so can we still afford? The cost of finishing what we started with turf fields? And if the answer is no, you can make a case for why the answer is no, because of all the other expenses that are sitting at your feet. You could make the case that until. Things are fixed at the state level and they start pushing the lottery funds into education. They open up more revenue streams at the state level to support school construction. That you don't have the luxury of continuing to do turf fields and you're just putting them on hold, you're not saying no, you're just putting them on hold. I will tell you, you have a community on that list is ready to, to purchase and build their own. And I've told them, we can't do that unless the board decides they're going to allow a school community to fund. A turf field, which they also want a turf field for field hockey.
I'm fine with that, but also.
But really, this is a board decision and we'll, we can move, but we do need to know tonight about Tallwood. If we're going to do a turf field for Tallwood, we have to know tonight, or it will not happen. For this coming year.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you, I have, uh, two questions. One is on the topic of the turf fields, but I'll start with my other one. Could you tell me about some of the, uh, factors that are considered for prioritization of the proj-, projects? Like when you have multiple projects that are going to happen or hoping to happen in a year. How you decide which one's going to be first, second, et cetera?
Alright, so it sounds like you're talking more broadly, you're not talking about any one group, you're talking about all of them.
So, um, thank you for the question, we work with our Office of Maintenance Services hand in hand. Uh, we look at both the, um, number of work orders and then their ability or inability to make simple repairs. Um, and the cost to them as well for having to repair it, so. We basically prioritize in terms of the greatest need, the greatest risk of failure. Which is how you see that list, the unsatisfactory, and we, we give it a priority ranking. And then we go ahead and, um, if we have to study the, the project, we do that as well. And we look at costs as well to see what we can do in a single year with the funding available, so that, that's pretty much how we work through that.
Okay, that's helpful. Sometimes we get questions about why this one first and why, why that one if they're both at the same status level on our chart. So my, uh, questions in regards to turf. And this might be one that we don't have, uh, enough information to really talk about today, but. I'm wondering what, if any, other options there may be. That help improve field drain, field drainage, um, and field maintenance that is not turf. Are there options of, uh, I don't know, digging? There we go, French drains and, uh, trenches and other options. And I wasn't here when the board decided to, to move forward with the, the turf fields. But I'm curious if other options were weighed out or if it was just, here's the option of the grass that we have. Which is flooded and mud versus here's turf. So if you know anything about other options.
Also, the same umbrella of the other questions, it's, it's a comprehensive discussion. That doesn't make us, any sense for us to sit up here with no research. And just talk in generalities with you. If the board directs us that you would like to go in a different direction, we will go do the research and come back to you. All of the considerations.
One last question with the, uh, Tallwood, uh, maintenance. It's the track and field, correct?
That is, that gets upgraded as part of the.
It's all together. So, if the board does not move forward with turf field. Would other maintenance still happen to that field, including whatever maintenance would happen with the, the track?
Well, I think the best way that we would have to answer that question is we would have to go back and address, is, is there anything that we were planning on getting done? When we did that turf field replacement that now is not going to get done, that we would need to account for. And again, I don't want to answer off the top of our head what they might be, that wouldn't be a detailed answer that, that we would provide. Does everybody have a perspective of what Tallwood's field condition is right now? What's your perspective?
I mean, I was, I was there this summer for a track meet, uh, AAU, AAU track meet. I don't, uh, have any. I, I don't even want to assume that I can, uh, decide how the grass is growing and if it's appropriate for the. Sports that are happening on it, in the summertime, they didn't have, uh, practices going. Every day of the week. But it, it was in need of some, some maintenance, just, I was at a track meet and so. I know that the track could use some maintenance and I am concerned about this delay. Delaying the, the track and, you know, the general maintenance of it. Which is why I'm wondering if it doesn't go turf, will maintenance still occur for that, for the property? Because I, I think it needs maintenance, I did not, uh, put a. A judgment on how, how badly and how that affects different sports.
Yeah, and so the, the field, the, the question I had is if you have in your mind a plush green. Well manicured field right now, that's not the condition, Tallwood High School's field. Uh, to quote an expert, it's in terrible condition. And now we're in the winter time and we have soccer and lacrosse coming up. And I learned something today, lacrosse is particularly challenging because of the small goal. Related to that and the amount of movement that the goalie does in that area and how much damage is done to that turf. And anybody who's trying to manage along, it takes a while to be able to accomplish that and it takes normally. A spring growing season or a fall growing season, more ideally. Where you can not have traffic and account for that. So, just as you go into it and I hear people trying to understand what's the best information we can have and a lot of it comes down the road. One of the things that you should understand is it's not in good condition and the word terrible was used. And we're going into a soccer and lacrosse season. Uh, when we've, and we have already moved some sports off of that, so for example, we don't play middle school football there right now because. Field doesn't support.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Alright, so I was going to save, uh, my comments, uh, on the turf until later, but. Then we have a conversation about it. I don't necessarily think, and as much as I hate to say it, but I don't think doing it at, um, it looks like we've done seven schools. And we have not done four, is that correct? I don't think that realizing that we couldn't finish it. And then continuing to spend three million dollars a school because we made. A decision, where the board made a decision, I was not here. Um, at that time and I, I haven't, um, been able to find the presentations that led to that decision. Does sound to me that a lot of it was related to, to drainage, um, especially since lacrosse's vote was just a couple of years ago. And, um. Dr. Robertson, you mentioned that with seven turf fields, we do have the ability to use a different field when needed. Uh, my question is, is, are we using the fields for lacrosse currently? And with seven turf fields and for grass fields?
Yes, Ms. Brown, we are, and I think, you know, as I'm listening to the conversation, those fields get used five days a week. As we're talking girls soccer JV varsity, boys soccer JV varsity. Uh, lacrosse, boys and girls. So they're hosting events on pretty much a daily basis, whether it's a game or a practice on those fields and. And although the lacrosse vote was just a couple of years ago, that conversation started. Many years ago about the addition of, of lacrosse. And a lot of the concerns we had doing the study on that was the fields won't be able to handle. The capacity of it, because also those fields are used for instructional spaces for physical education as well. So it is, um. I hate to generalize as Dr. Robertson did, but as a former coach. Uh, the wear and tear on fields is pretty significant as the year goes on, it deeply impacts. Performance and, and other things of that nature. So, we also host middle school football on those turf fields so they can play evening events as well. So, there's much that goes on with that beyond just a couple of, of seasonal events. Uh, that make it very challenging if, if, if you're on the grass fields. I hope that answered your question, but I wanted to provide a little more context there.
Thank you, I appreciate that, um, and I did, I appreciated, um, Ms. Owen's comments about. You know, curiosity if there was other ways to, um, tackle some of those, those drainage concerns. I have some more comments that I'm really going to give them later about, you know, the safety or the perceived safety of turf versus grass. And so, um, I, I do think that we need to have further conversations and reevaluate that direction though, um. I guess it's been about ten years and it, you know, we have lots of new board members up here and, uh, I think we should have those conversations. See, um, what the cost of, you know, a grass field is to maintain versus the cost of a turf field. Um, and I would also like to see an adolescent um sports medicine doctor on the, the safety and on developing bodies on turf versus grass because a, a, and developing body is not the same as an adult. So, thank you.
Ms. Franklin? Okay, Mr. Cole Peppers?
Boy, like you said, comp- complex subject. And uh, you know, two weeks ago when we had this conversation, my impression at least, is we asked you to do kinda one thing. Again, I won't speak for everybody, but I'll say for me, that the issue at the last meeting was uh, a little bit of shock that we were having to replace a field before we had even been able to install eleven fields. Uh, and I think you, I don't have the words in your mouth, but I think you told me that the expectation of these fields was something like fifteen years? Is that right?
Eight to eleven.
Eight to eleven, okay. Uh, and we're replacing this one at what, at how, how far down the road?
Uh, eleven years.
Oh, so it is eleven years old. Okay, so it, it, so it did actually make. Um, so what I was hoping to get out of uh, of this two week pause here was given that we are replacing a field before we have implemented or built eleven fields, is this a sustainable problem? Uh, your answer seems to me to be it is and the cost is nine hundred thousand dollars a year. Is that a true statement?
Once we get all of them in there, uh projecting the cost of nine hundred thousand dollars for re-turfing, yes.
So your math says something like fifteen million dollars over the next five years and then nine hundred thousand dollars a year after that.
Three per the, the schools that we would uh had programmed in there, so uh.
I counted the other one, cost roughly three million dollars.
High School Project and then nine hundred million. But that, that would be in year four through six that we would program that nine hundred thousand. I'm obligated to say that'll be inflation adjusted by the time it gets to year four.
She's whispering that in my ear too. I love it. Uh, okay. I'm sure, I'm gonna try to simplify this, although it's not simple. Uh, it, it sounds like our decision this afternoon is given all this conversation about all the other information that, that we could pursue, our decision when we get to voting on this issue later on is um, either to accept the path we're on, at least for this build. Which are only three schools that we're not building, so maybe that's not a great idea, but uh, or take a big pause and reevaluate and collect a lot more information. Because I mean, there, there are several different paths that have been thrown out here, one of which is just to stop right here and on these four fields we'll play on grass. Um, and then the other one is let's go back, let's, let's go back to grass. And that's a whole different problem. Uh, but that is not what we're discussing here today. It is, are we gonna build one field? Uh, or are we gonna pause here and reassess to some other game plan? Is that fair?
Uh, yes, it can, as a holdover from last one, cause this was already gonna be something that we were gonna present to you and we presented to you the plan. And it just so happened that when we got to last week and were executing the plan, that the school board. Wanna be able to adjust, so. Generally, yes, uh, yes.
Okay, well, and I'll just reiterate, your answer here is it's a sustainable plan, build four more at the cost that we discussed and then roughly a million dollars a year after that to maintain them. Okay, thank you.
So I'm with Mr. Cole Pepper on that one. We made a commitment to the city and clearly we have a group of people who are willing to raise the money uh needed to, to do it themselves. Um, that certainly sends a message. Um, but just some other food for thought, I'm just gonna look at Mr. Di Martini wh- when I make this comment is that as someone who cuts the grass out of baseball field here in Virginia Beach, um, I will tell you nothing, well, there are things that bring me greater joy, but that's one of them. I love field maintenance of a baseball field. Um, and I say baseball over football just because there are baseball fields that are turf now. Um, I love to cut those lines perfectly from foul pole to foul pole. I love to drag it infield. I love it. But I will tell you, it's a lot of work. And I want you to consider the time factor for coaches. And I look at Mr. Di Martini because I know he did the same thing along with Pete Zell at Ocean Lakes High School. It is, it's a full-time job for a coach to maintain their baseball fields. Um, and so be mindful of that also. And I will tell you, I don't know a baseball coach that probably would not prefer a turf field just because what the ground brings you, which is imperfection, holes and divots here and divots there and the grading is not right. Um, that's probably the last thing that's done during construction when people are ready to pull out and be done with this project. The grading's not that great. I can tell you that firsthand. So um, but I agree, we made a commitment to the, to this city. Um, and the next time perhaps, when faced with such a large commitment, that the board needs to really think long-term and really discuss the long-term implications of this type of continuous rolling of money. Um, but I don't know how we let people down now. And with that, um, Ms. Franklin.
Okay, not to belabor this, but um, you know, I, I would imagine for those that have been sat on this board when that this discussion initially happened, I have to imagine we didn't have the same concerns about our future CIP funding, um, maybe worrying about a reversion funds, you know, and those type of things. And it, it's, it might be just a different discussion now. Um, it's just simply because the finances look different. Um, you know, and uh, you know, it, it went in a good year, in a good financial years, you know, a lot of families will go on a vacation, a European vacation even maybe. Um, but uh, but you know, when things are, you know, are a little bit um more lean, you know, they might not go on a vacation, do a staycation. I, I just think that we, we can't look at when it initially happened because unless they had a crystal ball, they might not have realized the position we are in at this point. So with that said, um, you know, Dr. Robertson, you had mentioned about, I'm just trying to think kind of outside of the box right now, but you know, it, you had mentioned we can use different fields. It, it, I mean, would it be helpful at all to do one? Um, like um, maybe at, at HRA, you know, have a, a, a substitute field, for example, that we only have one that we have to maintain in terms of the next turf field. Or um, I'm just trying to think of, of ways that we, we might only have to do maybe one more project instead of three more or four more projects um, that, that we're gonna have to maintain like that. Um, is that, is that even, would that be helpful at all?
So I think that um, honestly, circumstances have changed.
Yeah, sure.
From a financial outlook and cost. I don't think it's gonna do this board any good to do one more and not do all. I think you guys are gonna have to decide whether you're gonna proceed and finish, whether you're going to pause and have a study done and maybe look at it in the following year. Um, or decide that we're just not gonna build anymore for the foreseeable future and we'll focus on uh increased maintenance on those four fields. Um, that's really kinda the situation that you're, I don't see any other options. Building a, another field in a central location is not going to eliminate the other four schools that are gonna be upset. Particularly three schools are gonna be upset if you do one more and not the other three.
So in, in the case of like the Cox community, being willing, being willing to, you know, contribute, is that then like a public-private partnership, um, Ms. Lenetti? Is how, is that something we have to approve? How, how do we?
It would depend on whether they donate as a gift or they do a pu- they could do a public-private partnership. Or really, it sounds like they're donating the money for you to do it. I'm thinking it's more of a gift, um, and some type of dedicated gift.
Okay, alright.
And then just recognize anytime you get a gift, when it's time to replace that field, there's the cost of that gift.
Sure, but we would have that cost.
We would have that cost, yeah. So, y- yes, we'd be very appreciative to accept a gift of that magnitude. Um, but then there's the, the maintenance and things like that, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Riggs, and uh, we have two speakers and be mindful that we still have a presentation on the five-year forecast. It's five o'clock and um, we're, this is up for action, so we are gonna be able to talk about this in a little bit. Ms. Riggs and then Ms. Manning.
Okay, so I'm ju- I'm not gonna reiterate what everyone else said. I agree with Mr. uh Cole Pepper. Um, I was one that was here. Things have changed. We've even had COVID since then. I mean, it's exponentially, our inflation rate has just gone out of the skyrocketed. So we know what's happened. We know that if we've promised these fields, then we need to deliver and move on and then come back and decide. Plus, I mean, we found out that there is question about um, the safety of, of the fields. And you've had two coaches speaking here and another person that has spent a lot of her life on the, on the baseball field, even maintaining them, that have seen, you know, the importance of it. So I think it's something that we've promised and to, to go back with four schools. Actually, it's the three and then Princess Anne is, is included in the price. So makes no sense whatsoever. So I, I just think, you know, I'm gonna reiterate with Mr. Cole Pepper said.
Ms. Manning?
Thank you. So I have been reflecting on our past decision to turf all of our fields. And I remembered that the reason we did this was because the community asked us to make lacrosse a varsity sport. And from my recollection, we were told that in order to do that, we really needed to commit to having turf fields due to the wear and tear on the fields. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my recollection.
That is a true statement.
The time we committed to that, I recall the cost were gonna be about a million dollars. I don't necessarily recall um, talking about the fact that we might have to replace them every eight years, but maybe that's just my memory. Um, now we're committing uh, or talking about tonight, voting on replacing um, Tallwood Field with turf field for two and a half million dollars. So that's a significant cost difference from just a few years ago when we approved this. And so I, I'm just super torn over this because we did commit to lacrosse as a varsity sport. Um, and we told our community that we were gonna be adding turf fields. Although I, I, I agree, times have changed and looking at the presentation that Mr. Freeman just gave us about the problems with our roofs in, in our schools, the HVAC condition and our, um, our crumbling infrastructure. Um, those have to be our priorities. So I, you know, all of that to say, where I'm leaning right now is if we commit to making Tallwood a turf field, we need, need to commit to making all of our fields turf to make it fair across the board. Or we need to take a, a, a moment to pause and reflect and decide, do we wanna go back to grass? So those are my thoughts on the issue. Uh, I thought I'd share those now rather than in the formal meeting, but um, I, I'm still not quite sure how I'm gonna vote. So I'm, I, I've been really listening to everybody's points of view here and, and hopefully I'll have an answer by the formal meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Owens?
Thank you. Um, one other question. I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but for maintenance on our grass fields, uh, how much money are we spending per year to maintain our grass fields?
That's another number we would need to come back to with, it's part of that, uh, the whole umbrella of the conversation. That all gets weighed together of what's the cost benefit, what's the playability, what are the other options? It's all part of that conversation.
And I know, and I don't wanna put you in a position to give anything that would be inaccurate, but are we thinking like more than a hundred thousand dollars a year or less than a hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain our grass fields?
We can get you that number uh for directed to go down a different path.
Okay, thank you.
We can get to that number regardless, um, but a- again, we won't.
If I can clarify, if the decision of the board is to um, pause due to the, and then get more information, um, I would wanna make sure that it's with the understanding that we continue to maintain the turf fields that we have in existence, which means that we've got to take care of Calum when year eleven. And then in four or five years, we'll have to do one of the schools that we did three, three or four years ago so that we don't lose the seven we have because that does give us flexibility and when uh, when, when weather is really bad.
So um, just so that we're ready to discuss this later, what are, what schools do not have turf? Now Princess Anne High School will have, Princess Anne High School would be part of the new build, right? Okay, so that one aside, what are the other three?
We're, we're gonna bring up the slide just because visuals are so much better. So we're gonna bring up the slide just so we got everybody.
And I would say, Ms. Melnick, given that uh, we haven't uh brought back a final plan for Princess Anne High School.
Well, I understand that, but just generally speaking, that would be part of the new build. Okay, but we have Tallwood, Landstone and Cox. Okay, just for, and Cox is the school that said they'd be willing to raise the money? Okay, alright, just leave that there and we'll come back at action. Okay, everybody good? Alright, with that, we're gonna move on to the five-year forecast with Crystal Pate, our chief exec, our chief financial officer. Welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, School Board Members, Dr. Robertson. So this presentation is gonna be essentially a repeat of the, of Virginia Beach City Public Schools portion of the five-year forecast delivered earlier this afternoon in a joint meeting of the City Council and School Board. Um, in that presentation, um, an economic outlook was provided by a regional economist with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and also the City's Director of Budget and Management Services. Um, presented some information related to the city and their revenue sources. Um, that will not be reshared tonight. Um, you may find much of that information in the bound document of the five-year forecast. And so if you were in this afternoon's presentation, um, please bear with me. I'm gonna try to go through this um, as quickly as I can, so um, without trying to not cover information. Um, so I will outline aspects of the school operating budget, including student enrollment projections, revenue and expenditure assumptions and potential factors that could impact this budget forecast. Um, we hope this forecast serves as a platform for future discussion and consideration of alternative approaches. Um, there's further detail in the document on topics like our uh developing compass to twenty thirty strategic framework, um, programmatic priorities and major initiatives, school safety and technology infrastructure. Uh, we see this forecast as a strategic planning tool focused on sustainability and it does not include proposed balancing solutions or revised service levels. Instead, it is a planning resource highlighting opportunities and challenges over time. Specific budget balancing measures will be introduced as we prepare future budgets. Naturally, projections become less certain as we look further ahead, influenced by variables like state, federal and local budgets, compensation trends, inflation, state or federal mandates, grant matches and new school board priorities. The forecast is built upon the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget, historical data and assumptions derived from various sources. We gain additional insight into the state's budget when the governor updates the economic forecast and submits the state's proposed budget typically in mid-December. Um, really quick, I wanna, uh, before we get into the size on the assumptions, I wanna briefly touch on some factors that influence budget planning over the coming five years. Um, the General Assembly and the governor are likely to have ample funds to debate in the revised budget that the governor will propose next month, in part due to a projected three point two billion dollar state's revenue surplus in this fiscal year and next. While there appears no recession is in sight and certainty exists over the future of the federal government workforce that underpins one-third of Virginia's economy as the incoming president prepares to take office. The governor's indicated plans to advocate for tax cuts in the revised budget he will introduce in December, while the opposing party is expected to continue prioritizing additional investments in K-12 schools, higher education and healthcare. Additionally, there are indications that the governor may once again propose modernizing Virginia's sales tax to include certain services rather than limiting it to goods. Um, the last item I'm gonna touch on is, um, before getting to these assumptions is related to the um, the Virginia's Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission or the J-LARK report from July twenty twenty-three, which highlighted the major shortcomings of the state's school funding system. It found Virginia schools receive far less funding per K through twelve student compared to national, regional and neighboring state averages. This underfunding is linked to flaws in the standards of quality or SOQ formula, which underestimates staffing needs, salaries and resources necessary to ensure a high-quality education for students as it fails to account for the workforce needed to meet educational standards accurately. Furthermore, the formula underestimates salaries and related compensation costs for most SOQ-recognized positions. This underfunding is a critical issue. It has it. This underfunding is a critical issue, and as it has far-reaching implications for the quality of education that students receive. Compounding these issues, SOQ formula does not adequately account for students with high needs, including at-risk students, those in special education, and English learners. The state's funding allocations for these specific student populations fall significantly short at the funding levels established as necessary by comprehensive cost studies conducted in other states. This deficiency threatens the ability of Virginia schools to provide the essential resources and support required to ensure an equitable and inclusive education for all students. Some progress was made in the twenty-twenty-four budget, particularly in supporting students from low-income families. However, more effort is needed to address both near-term and long-term J-LARK recommendations. Uh, October thirty-first, Virginia lawmakers discuss ways to address the state's decades-old funding formula and consider a series of near-term recommendations from J-LARK that could be phased into the Commonwealth's plans within three to four years. These include removing the support cap, which limits the number of support positions the state would fund, addressing technical issues with the funding formula, and using division averages instead of approximating what most school divisions spend on operating their schools in the state's calculations. J-LARK also recommended that the local composite index or the locality's ability to pay education costs should be changed to a three-year, three-year average instead of every two, as well as suggesting changing the at-risk funding formula that would impact low-income or students identified as at-risk, and studying special education staffing needs. Longer-term J-LARK recommendations, such as moving to a student-weighted funding model instead of using the current staff-based model, updating staffing ratios to more accurately reflect how school divisions are staffed, and updating salary assumptions during re-bench marking, or more complex and will require more in-depth review. The joint subcommittee's work will be extensive, yet crucial to tie final report recommendations to viable revenue sources over the coming years. So this diagram that you see now highlights the primary revenue assumptions for the forecast. Um, the local contributions calculated through the local revenue sharing formula remain the largest revenue source with the school division. The Commonwealth of Virginia contributes the next-largest source of revenue, primarily through basic aid and categorical programs, incentive programs, lottery programs, and state sales tax. Additional revenue comes from federal sources and other lo, local funding sources. So we made the following assumption, revenue assumptions for the five-year projection. For the local contribution, year-over-year increases are projected at four-point-one percent for twenty-five, twenty-six, two-point-eight percent for twenty-six, twenty-seven, two-point-six percent for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and two-point-five percent for both twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and twenty-nine, thirty. State revenue figures from the Virginia Department of Education's cap tool will be updated, uh, once the governor releases his budget in December. Currently, we anticipate a six-point-three-two percent increase for twenty-five, twenty-six, followed by a moderate three-percent annual increase for the remainder of the forecast period. Growth in state sales tax revenue has plateaued for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. A slight increase of point-nine percent has projected based on VDOE estimates, with smaller increases of point-five percent in subsequent years. Currently, we are seeing sales tax revenue marginally exceeding that of last year. Primary federal revenue sources for the school operating fund are federal impact aid and Medicaid reimbursements. Despite recent trends of exceeding budget projections in this category, we are forecasting flat revenues due to potential changes at the federal level. Other local revenue includes miscellaneous sources such as tuition, fees, facility rentals, sale of salvage materials, and capital assets, lost and stolen technology, and the stop-arm program. While most streams are not expected to grow, revenue from the stop-arm enforcement program has shown consistent increases since its inception. As a result, we are projecting an annual increase of seventy-five thousand dollars for this program. Enrollment is expected to decline each year throughout the forecast period. The long-term implications of this trend will depend on factors such as economic conditions and lasting effects of the pandemic. But although average daily membership is decreasing, the number of English-language learners and students receiving special education services has steadily risen, and the percentages of students affected by poverty saw an increase of nearly five percent in twenty-two, twenty-three compared to ni, two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty-twenty-one, and over two percent in twenty-two, twenty-three compared to twenty-one and twenty-two, stabilizing at this elevated level. These growing student needs place additional strain on the operating budget as we continue efforts to address pandemic-related learning loss and social-emotional challenges. This slide outlines the key budget expenditure assumptions. Um, over the forecast period, expenditures are projected to grow at a faster pace than revenues due to factors such as compensation increases, rising healthcare costs, inflation, debt service, and the need for additional resources to support our evolving student population. Expenditure assumptions are as follows: For compensation, a three-percent salary increase, including step increments, or for full-time personnel, is assumed throughout the forecast period. These, these increases are placeholders for future consideration by the school board as part of the annual budget development process, and are not guaranteed. Employer health insurance rates are projected to rise by fifteen percent in fiscal year twenty-six, with a five-percent annual increase in subsequent years. We are collaborating with our third-party consultant to identify strategies to mitigate rising healthcare costs. A one-percent increase in the employer Virginia retirement system rate is projected for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and with another one-percent increase anticipated for twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Non-personnel line items are expected to increase by three percent annually to account for inflation. Pay-go funding for our capital improvement program is expected to increase one million dollars annually over the forecast period to address escalating facility maintenance needs and reduce reliance on debt service. Monitoring pay-go funding will remain a priority, given the substantial maintenance demands of our aging facilities. So with respect to workforce challenges, um, we're all aware that the nationwide teacher shortage continues to significantly challenge other school divisions, including Virginia Beach. Um, recruiting and retaining both educators and non-instructional staff remains difficult to, due to a shrinking teacher pool, non-competitive salaries, rising hu, housing costs, and increased job market competition, factors that jeopardize educational quality. Despite a three-and-a-half-percent salary increase for teachers, Virginia Beach's entry-level teacher salaries dropped from fourth to seventh place among the seven school divisions in twenty-four, twenty-five. Neighboring school divisions currently offer entry-level salaries two to eight-point-two percent higher than those in Virginia Beach, which underscores the need for further adjustments. Non-instructional employees in the Unified Pay Scale did receive an average increase of three percent, with the minimum hourly wage for allocated positions rising to fifteen dollars as of July first, twenty-four, and increasing to fifteen dollars and thirty cents on August first, twenty-four, ahead of the sta, state-mandated deadline of January twenty-twenty-six. So the division is actively working with the consultant to finalize updates to the Unified Experience-Based Step-Pay Scale and assess the competitiveness of the entry rate for the instructional experience step-pay scale. Recommendations from this work will be considered potential, for potential implementation in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget cycle. Based on those previously outlined revenue and expenditure assumptions, the school division is projecting a deficit in the school operating budget for each of the forecast period as shown on this slide. I'll give you a moment to see. And then this slide right here just illustrates that same data, but only in graph form with revenues shown in green and expenditures in blue. So there are several factors unique to school divisions that can drive educational costs to increase at a rate faster than inflation or available funding. This slide highlights several of these factors that could impact future budgets. Each of these considerations is carefully evaluated as we work to align our budget with available funding and the priorities established by our school board and leadership. Recognizing these factors offers valuable context for understanding the financial challenges schools face today and the broader context considerations that inform budget decisions. And I'll leave that up so you can read it for just a moment. And then, Dr. Robertson, I don't know if you wanna comment on this slide. Okay, and I'm tired, now I'm sorry. Alright, and that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions.
So in fairness, though, Dr. Robertson, I think today, thank you to those who were in attendance today, but I think today, um, I've been going to these for ten years. Today, there was actually some real movement and some conversation surrounding collaboration. Um, and I really appreciated that today. Um, I've already seen city council, new cities council and old city council members reaching out to the newly-elected school board members. I think that piece is really, really important. The mayor mentioned today, um, he used, he used the term unfunded mandates, which means he understands that. He, he understands that these exist for everybody, and so he knows that we will be sharing the list of our fun, unfunded mandate. We, we keep a copy. We typically only list maybe the top twenty of our unfunded mandates, maybe fifteen. Um, and they're significant, um, and I think, I think council members will be interested in, in seeing exactly what we're required to pay for that, um, that is mandated by the state. But I was pleased, um, with that movement. I think, I think that's setting us up for a really successful budget season, even if it doesn't go in our favor. But you presented in one of your slides expenditures, um, higher than budget, but so did the city.
Yes, they did.
And they did mention, um, they did mention, hey, i, in the end, we are gonna come up with a balanced budget, don't worry, even though this is what you're seeing on the screen. So they are facing some of the same, the same, the same, um, problems that we are. And, um, it is incumbent on us to maintain, um, fair conversation with our counterparts and, um, I just expect that from my colleagues, and I know, um, I know, uh, we'll move forward that way. Ms. Riggs.
Also, um, when we, I, the sharing that, um, we've got about our, um, welding and all of the programs that we've started would have been a really good thing, because they've been asking us to do this. This was on their list, you know, they ran for this, and so this is something that we really need to share. And, um, they need to see that not only the programs you put up there, which are, you know, and I, and I, we get why you put them up there, Dr. Robertson, because not everybody knows about those programs, and they take them for granted. You know, everybody does this. No, they don't. But, and that's what you were trying to point out. We, we all get it. Um, but to see how far we've come just in this last year with our programs for the skills-based programs, it's, it's amazing. And one of the good things is we will have those legislators there at our legislative breakfast, I think it's the thirteenth of December, at the tech center, and they will be seeing the welding and, and all of the great programs, as well as being fed by our culinary arts students. So I, you know, I think that, that's a really good plus, too. And, um, maybe we should invite some of our city council members over there, too, if they haven't been. So I think that would be a great idea.
And, Dr. Robertson, that'll be a good time to break that, uh,
Yeah.
break that slide back out of the vault.
Yep, there you go. So thank you, we get it, and I think you did a fantastic job, both of you guys did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for this afternoon, too. Okay, Mrs. Lynetti, we have a, a meaty closed session. It's five-twenty.
Yeah, it's, you've gotta come up with a decision, so I don't think you're gonna make it.
It'll take us longer to read in and out of clothes. So with that, it is five-twenty, and we will reconvene at six o'clock.